Hi, this is Rochelle your microbiology tutor. Welcome to today's session. We are going to discuss the structures and functions of prokaryotes and eukaryotes. I know it's um pretty straightforward. We have the the structure and then we have the definition and the function of that particular structure. If you're interested in these slides that I will be presenting today, feel free to click the link in my description box, but if you're part of my club, yep, if you're a part of my club, I'll go ahead and email these slides to you. So feel free to do that. Towards the end of this session, we are going to play bingo. Fun, right? We are going to play bingo and it's just to help you um retain, help you to test your knowledge to um see if what you are learning in lecture and what you're learning during the study sessions are sinking in, you're retaining it, but then you're also regurgitating uh what you are studying, so I am hoping that these games would be a nice fun interactive way to study microbiology. So without further ado, let's get started. Okay, first we have glycolalics. It's a sugary coat viscous gelatinous and it's a polymer, either polysaccharide, polypeptide or even both. Now glycohouse can form slime layer or capsules. Now the slime layer is very unorganized. It's loosely attached to the cell wall, well capsules straight opposite. They are organized and um is external to the cell wall. Now if you want to stain and you want to see what capsules look like under the microscope, well, you're gonna have to not do gram staining, oh no, 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 no. You're gonna do negative staining, so remember that. If you wanna see capsules, you're gonna have to do negative staining. Next, we have extracellular polymeric substance. Now it helps cells attach to their target environments and to each other in biofilm. Now here I've listed a few examples, feel free anytime to pause the video and take notes. First example is bacillus anthracis. It creates um they create uh capsules for for themselves of D glutamic glutamic acid. Phimbriai, they are hair-like appendages, they're shorter, straighter and thinner than uh flagella. They adhere to each other and to surfaces assist in and assist in forming biofilms. And here is an example ni- uh niceria gonorrhoeae. Next we have peli. Now bacteria can have peli either one or two appendages that are longer than phimbriai. Now the function here is um conjugation, which is the transfer of DNA from one bacterium to the next or to another and motility, it help it helps in motility. Um and how they move is through twitching and gliding. Next we have flagella, they are long filamentous uh appendages that propel bacteria. Here are a list of, let's say arrangements, flagella arrangements um on bacteria. We have a tricus where uh bacteria might not even have uh flagella. They lack it, we have peritricus, they have flagella all over the cell. We have polar, which means that um at one end or both ends of the cell, there are flagella. Monotrichus, there's one flagellum on one pole of the um bacterium. And then lowfow tricus where there's a tough of a gella on one pole, which you see here on your screen. Lastly, we have amphitrichus where flagella are on both poles, both ends of the um bacterium. Now with movement as I mentioned, um with peli aiding in the twitch um aiding in motility through or by twitching and gliding, they have to move towards either um the good environment or a bad environment. And this movement is called taxes, it's the movement of bacteria towards or away from a particular stimuli. For example, we have chemotaxis. Now bacteria can move towards chemicals that are um helpful to them or move away that are harmful, some bacteria um may not like light. So we have phototaxis, it's the movement away from the light or towards the light. Lastly, here we have axial filaments, they are bundles of phimbrials that arise at the ends of the cell beneath an outer sheath and spiral around the cell and a great example of this are um spiral keats. The cell wall, everyone knows about the cell wall. The cell wall is designed to keep the shape of the bacteria uh of bacteria. It prevents the cell from rupturing due to water pressure cuz there's like a ton of water that can just come in the cell, but the cell wall helps to keep the structure and helps the cell from not rupturing. It can also contribute to the bacterial cell to cause disease and um whatever host they are um in. Let's break down gram positive cells and gram negative cells. Now gram positive cells have Pepto de glycan. They have and Pepto de glycan consists of N acetylmuramic acid or NAM and it has N aceto glucosamine, NAG, tetrapetide side chains, peptide crossbridge, lipotacoic acid, tocoic acid, and then there's also the um plasma membrane after the cell wall and proteins that are embedded in the plasma membrane. On to gram negative cells. Gram negative cells has an outer membrane, the uh cell wall and then the inner membrane. Let's start with Pepto uh Pepto de glycan, the cell wall. It consists of NAM and NAG, just like the gram positive, and it also has an inner plasma membrane that has proteins embedded and an outer um plasma membrane that has proteins and lipopolysaccharides, LPS, embedded in that outer plasma membrane. Atypical cell walls, some bacteria have atypical cell walls. It's either no walls or very little material and a great example of this is mycoplasma. Archaea, um they may lack uh lack or have unusual cell walls composed of polysaccharides and proteins and and it be and it would be called a pseudomereine, which is very similar to Pepto de glycan. Uh there are some bacteria such as Mycobacterium that have um acid fat acid fast cell walls, which consists of hydrophobic waxy lipids. And when you are staining, you would stain with um carbophusion, which is a red color. Now how are we to destroy these bacteria? Bacteria invades us, we're the host, bacteria comes in, we get sick, how and we go to the doctor? Well, what does the doctor do? The doctor of course um diagnoses you and realizes that you're probably gonna need antimicrobial drugs. So that would be administered to you and it would have to be very specific to target the cell wall. And when it's targeting the cell wall, it targets the the synthesis of the cell wall. So then the bacteria will not create its own cell wall and they would just die. Now or be deleted. Now um another um way for the cell wall to be destroyed is through lysosomes. Lysosomes are digestive enzymes. And it is active on the cell wall of gram positives, which makes them very vulnerable to lys- um lysis, which leads me to protoplast, which is associated with gram positive bacteria. Now once the cell wall is gone, either through anti um microbial drugs or lysosomes, what is left is the plasma membrane and all of its contents. Now this wallless cell is called protoplast. The next one here on the screen is spheroplast, which is associated with gram negative bacteria. Now the cell wall is typically not destroyed like gram positives cuz remember, we just spoke about the structure of the cell wall of gram negatives and gram positives. Now the gram negative has an outer membrane, a very thin uh cell wall and then a an inner an inner membrane. So it's kinda hard for for example lysosomes to come in because that outer membrane is protecting the cell wall. But there is a way, there is a way to destroy the cell wall and that's by administering EDTA. It weakens the ionic bonds in the outer membrane, makes it weak and then allows lysosomes to enter in and destroy Pepto de glycan. The plasma membrane, it is the arrangement of phospholipids and proteins. Now let's hit that structure. We have lipids, now the lipid has a head and it has a tail. The head is polar and hydrophilic, which is uh hydrophilic. Now the head is composed of a um hydro hydro, a phosphate group and glycerol. Now the tail is non-polar and it's hydrophobic, it's fatty, it's a fatty acid. So we have the head, which is hydrophilic, water-loving and the tail that is hydrophobic, water fearing. Next we have proteins, peripheral proteins, integral proteins, um glycoproteins and glycolipids. Now peripheral proteins can be enzymes that catalyze chemical reactions. They act as scaffolds for support and they are um mediators to change in um the membrane shape. Integral proteins, they act as uh channels like having pores where um substances can enter or leave the cell. Glycoproteins, they are proteins and carbohydrates and then glycolipids are lipids and hydro hydro um carbohydrates. Now they help protect and lubricate the cell and is involved in cell-to-cell interaction. So the function of the plasma membrane is to serve as a selective barrier where um materials can enter and leave the cell. It is selective permeability, that's what it has. Now destructive, the destruction of the plasma membrane. How to destroy it? Well, you can use compounds like alcohols or quarks. They are disinfectants or or antibiotics can be used. And the example here I have is polymyxin. The movement on the plasma membrane. We have pos- um positive passive process and um osmotic solutions. Let's start with passive processes. We have simple diffusion, facilitated diffusion and osmosis. Simple diffusion, it is the net movement of molecules or ions from high concentration to low concentration. Facilitated movement of ion uh facilitated is facilitated diffusion is the movement of ions or large molecules across the membrane. The uh uh integral proteins that we just discussed um in the last slide are transporters or and integral proteins are transport, if I can slow down. Integral proteins are transporters or permeasis. Osmosis, osmosis is the net movement of water across the membrane from high concentration to low concentration of water. Now it can pass through the membrane or it can pass through integral proteins, one in particular called aquaporins. On to osmotic solutions, we have uh isotonic, hypotonic and hypertonic. Isotonic is the uh concentration of solutes, which is the substance that are equal inside and outside of the cell. Hypertonic solution, which is um there's a greater concentration of solutes, the substance that are in the environment than it is inside the cell. So water leaves the cell thus causing plasmolysis. Hypotonic solution, there's a greater concentration of the solutes, the substance that are inside the cell versus outside the cell. So the water flows inside the cell and this can cause osmotic lysis. Some more about the movement of plasma membranes. Um active processes, this process involves ATP. Let's go to active transport. Now ATP is used to move substances across the membrane like ions, um amino acids and simple sugars. Now group translocation, uh the substances are chemically altered during the transport across the membrane. Now energy is required and supplied by high energy phosphate groups. And a great example here is a sugar uh is glucose, which is a sugar. Cytoplasm is a thick aqueous semi-transparent and elastic. Eighty percent of its water, twenty percent is proteins like enzymes or uh carbohydrates, lipids, inorganic ions, low molecular weight compounds. Nucleoid, it is a single long, single long continuous and frequently circular circularly arranged thread of double stranded DNA. It's bacterial chromosome. Now there isn't any, no zip, zero, no envelope and no histones. We have plasmins, now plasmins are, well, let me get back to that one, I'll do that one last. Um nucleoids also are attached to the plasma membrane. Um it can be spherical elongated or a dumbbell shape and uh it's genetic information. It takes part in the cell structure of and the functions. So DNA is so important for not only us but for bacteria so that they can produce more like ribosomes um and different parts like um the plasma membrane or the cell wall, it helps produce these things that are needed for the bacteria to survive. So back to plasmins. Now plasmins are s- uh small circular double stranded DNA, the extra chromosomal genetic elements. They gain or they can be gained or can be lost without harming the cell. And that is through either um replication or if you're in the lab, um transferring plasmins. Ribosomes, they are in the cytoplasm and they are, that's where um protein synthesis occurs. So we have um the, I don't know which one I should start with. How about the one on the left? So it contains a protein and ribal- uh RNA or rRNA. Uh the name of the ribosome in prokaryotes, it's seventy S ribosomes. Now when you um when you're taking your exam, please pay close attention to uh the name of the ribosome, whether it's seventy S, eighty S or it can mix you up and say a hundred S, a hundred and twenty S. Prokaryotes are um seventy S. Now they have a small unit, which is called thirty S, that has one molecule of rRNA and it and the larger uh subunit is called fifty S, which has two molecules of rRNA. And this will give you the seventy S ribosome. Lastly, we have streptomycin and gentamicin that attach to thirty S and um interferes with protein synthesis. So these are antimicrobial drugs, drugs that interfere with um the structure of ribosomes. Next up we have inclusions, they are reserved deposits. They they are aggregates of um various compounds that are normally involved in storing energy reserves or building blocks for the cells. Let's go to metachromatic granules. They reserve inorganic phosphates, polypho- um polyphosphate. They are used in the synthesis of ATP. Now they are found, these granules are found in algae, fungi, um protozoa and bacteria. Uh here is an example, we have Carneria bacteria, diphtheria and they in this um bacterium is a caus- um causative agent of diphtheria. Uh next one we have polygranules, they consist of glycogen and starch. Now these granules, um when iodine is introduced um and is present in the cell, glycogen will appear reddish, like a reddish brown and then the starch would um appear blue. So remember that, especially when you're in labs. Lipid inclusions, lipid storage materials is polymer, poly beta hydroxy buteric acid. Examples here are um let's see Mycobacterium, um bacilli, spirulium. Uh when you're in the lab and you want to stain them, you would use Sudan dye. Next we have sulfur granules. These granules reserve energy and they derive their energy by oxidizing sulfur and sulfur containing compounds. More inclusions, okay, the last three inclusions that we're gonna be discussing here are gas vacuoles. So we have um gas vacuoles, they consist of rows of gas um vesicles. They're hollow cylinder um covered by proteins. We have um now this ga- the gas vacuoles, they maintain buoyancy so they can receive oxygen, light and nutris- um nutrients. An example are um aquatic um prokaryotes like cyanobacteria or anoxigenic um photo um photosynthetic bacteria or hallow bacteria. Our next one is magnet magnetozomes and the material inside um these zones are um iron oxide which surround which is surrounded by um plasma membrane. Now magnetic zones help bacteria to move downward until they can attach to a site. Now they can um decompose hydrogen peroxide and prevent accumulation. And you will find out later on um future um a future chapter that hydrogen peroxide can be toxic to bacteria. And they and bacteria find ways to break down hydrogen peroxide. Next one, we have carb- um carboxylomes. It contains the enzyme rib- um ribulose ribulose uh one five bis phosphate carboxylase. An example here, we have um nitrofin bacteria, cyanobacteria and acetal thiol bacilli. Endosporous, this is the last slide for prokaryotes. And the next we'll do uh eukaryotes, so endosporous. They are known for resting, they are resting cells when nutrients are depleted. They uh here are a couple of examples, um gram positives like the genre uh castridium. And castridium is known for gangrene, uh tetanus, botulism and food poisoning. And another example is bacillus, um and that's known for um anthrax. They can survive extreme heat, lack of water and exposure to many toxic chemicals and radiation. Now spores can or bacteria can go through sporulation or sporogenesis. And here on the screen you'll see the five steps. Step one, DNA is uh duplicated. Two, septum forms and begins to form and divide the uh the cell. Three, plasma membrane starts to derode and uh derode the DNA. Not derode, surround. Um plasma membrane starts to surround, that's a little typo right there, of DNA, um the cytoplasm and the membrane. Four, spore acceptance surrounds the smaller compartment forming the four spore. Pepto de glycan forms between the membrane. And then five, the spore coat forms and the endospor is released. Here's a term to remember, germination. It is the dormant resistant spore transitioned it back into metabolically active vegetative cell under formal uh favorable environment conditions. So germinations when the cell is dormant and when it's in favorable um conditions, it basically quote comes back to life. We have eukaryotes. Flagella, this should go a little bit faster because um there are some bacteria there that have flagella and there are some uh eukaryotes that have flagella, so it's kinda um overlapping in some cases in um this uh in these slides. So we have flagella and cilia. Cellular locomotion or for moving um substances along the surface of the membrane. We have protozoa and we have algae. Cell wall and glycolalics. Now fungi, they have cell wall and they have and it consists of cellulose polysaccharides called chitin. And we have algae, algae, they have um polysaccharide cellulose. Also yeast have polysaccharides called gluten and um manin. And then we have protozoa, they are, they typically don't have cell walls but have an outer protein covering called um pel- pelico. And then um amine- amino acids. Animal cells, animal cells, they have um glycalalics covering over the membrane. It's been about thirty minutes or so and my mouth is a little dry, so please forgive me. Next one, we have plasma membrane. Now the plasma membrane for eukaryotes has uh hydro um carbohydrates. They attach to sites and they can be receptors to sites. There's also sterols, complex lipids. They have the ability of the membrane or the ability of the membrane to resist lysis from osmotic pressure. There is simple diffusion, facilitated diffusion, osmosis and active transport, which occurs but not um group translocation, what you've seen in prokaryotes. So remember that eukaryotes have hydro um carbohydrates and sterols. What else? Um oh, also remember that mycoplasmas, the one that is wallless, they have sterile sterile similar to eukaryotes. Hmm the last thing on this slide is endocytosis. It's a segment of the segment of plasma membrane surrounds a particular uh a particle or large um molecule. It encloses the molecule and or the uh particle and then brings it into the cell and that's endocytosis. And how I think of it is E N something going in using the word I N. So um a large molecule or particles coming inside the cell using the plasma membrane. Cytoplasm, it encompasses the substance the substances inside the plasma membrane and outside the cell, um the nucleus. Now cytosol is the fluid in the cell and cyto- um the nucleus now cytosol is the fluid in the cell and cytoskeleton is the small um has small rods and cylinders that provide the support and the shape and trans and helps and aids in transporting substances now here eukaryotes they also have ribosomes and these ribosomes are eighty S ribosomes and um protein synthesis does occur at these sites uh the ribosome site remember for eukaryotic uh ribosomes it's eighty S but the subunit the small one is forty S and it has one molecule of rRNA and then the larger unit is sixty S which has three molecules of rRNA it is um eighty eighty S and I see a typo on my uh on my slide it's eighty S remember that then nucleus the the mastermind the brain of everything it is the there is DNA spherical or oval um structure that contains DNA and in that shape we have the nuclear envelope which is a double membrane that surrounds the DNA um the nucleus has tiny channels in the nuclear envelope called nuclear pores nucleoli are found in the nuclear envelope it is a condensed region of chromosomes location it is the location of ribosomal RNA synthesis the DNA has histones and non histones um and nucleosomes nucleosomes that has a hundred and sixty five base pairs of DNA and um nine molecules of histones there are chromatin chromatin is DNA and proteins that are in a thread like mass and when chromatin are coiled together very tightly you will see chromosomes endoplasmic reticulum now we have smooth and we have rough and now let's start with the rough because it is connected to the uh nuclear envelope so it is a factory for synthesizing secretory uh proteins and membrane molecules is continuous from the nuclear envelope as I just said and it's studded with ribosomes the same ribosomes the eighty S ribosomes that um are sites for protein synthesis next we have smooth R um ER it extends from the rough ER and synthesizes uh phospholipids uh synthesizes phospholipids fats and uh steroids steroids um for example estrogens and testosterone testosterones Golgi apparatus now here is the the function the guess a cycle that you would um want to remember now in Golgi complex the proteins are synthesized by the ribos- uh ribosomes from the rough ER on the Golgi and go to the Golgi appar- uh apparatus Golgi complex I remember when I was in um in school it was called Golgi apparatus and it's just stuck in my head but it's Golgi complex now the protein is transported by the tran- uh transported by the transport vesicle from the ER membrane vesicles fuse with the Golgi complex and releases the protein the transfer um the transfer vesicles move mod- modified proteins like glycoproteins glycolipids and lipoproteins from cistern to cistern and this is all happening this part is happening in the Golgi app uh complex secretory vesicles deliver proteins to the plasma membrane where uh where they are released by exocytosis so we had endos- endocytosis where large molecules and um particles are coming into the cell here we have exocytosis where proteins are exiting out next we have secretory vesicles deliver proteins to the membrane to incorporate the proteins uh and then we have storage vesicles like lysosomes speaking of lysosomes the Golgi complex membrane engulfed sphere so it is a um I guess a piece of the Golgi complex that is in a sheer a sheer a sphere shape which contains about forty different digestive enzymes and these enzymes break down molecules and this is involved in um what do you call it phagocytosis the next one here we have um vacuoles uh the uh tonoplas is the membrane that encloses the cavity in the cytoplasm it derives from the Golgi app uh Golgi complex it is temporary storage it helps bring food into the cell in plants it stores metabolic waste and poisons also in plants it takes up water so that size can be increased and provide rigidity and we see that in leaves and how leaves stand up is because water is coming in um giving that support and that structure the mitochondria it is the powerhouse it produces ATP so let's get into it in the inner um no let's go over here to the left so there's two membranes the outer membrane is smooth and the inner membrane is a series of folds called um crystine it has seventy S ribosomes they have their own DNA and machinery to replicate transcribe and translate DNA how amazing is that all of that in that little 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 mito- uh mitochondria um it reproduces on their own by growing and then dividing into two now um inside uh the mito- mitochondria there is the matrix and it is a semi-fluid in the center so the next one in the inner membrane there are chemical reactions and this is where we see the production of ATP chloroplast algae and green plants have chloroplast now they can multiply on their own in cell and increase in size and divide into just like the mitochondria they have seventy S um ribosomes just like mitochondria and bacteria they have DNA and enzymes that are involved in protein synthesis chloroplast are membrane enclosed organelles that have um both pigment chlorophyll and enzymes needed for photosynthesis perioxizomes they uh multiply by division they have one or two uh enzymes that can oxidize uh organic substances an example is amino acids fatty acids are um oxidized um oxidized toxic substances like alcohol and has catalyze that um decomposes hydrogen peroxide which is toxic okay we're done it is time to play bingo now we're gonna pick your card either it's the blue one the red one or the green card and please feel free to pause if I'm going a little too fast but it's time to pick your card blue red or green and we are going to do let's see we are going to do right we're going to do the right column down so for example we have nucleoid nucleus smooth ER we're gonna go down on the right hand side so whichever card you pick we're going down on the right side the right column let's get started so we have the definition and then you're gonna find the term definition number one is the synthesis of phospholipids fatty acids and steroids next one a single long continuous and frequently circular arranged thread of double stranded DNA bacterial chromosome ATP is used to move substances across the membrane I think we're on four so seventy S thirty S are the subunit well we have seventy S ribosome you didn't hear that we have seventy S and these subunits are thirty S and fifty S it contains um protein and ribosomal RNA and it's the location where protein synthesis occurs membrane enclosed organelle that has both pigment chlorophyll and enzymes needed for photosynthesis serves as a selective barrier where materials can enter and leave the cell selective permeability actually went back the next one is well you should already have a bingo by now and I'm not gonna tell you which card should have the bingo at this point so that's what I was checking um so congratulations if you got the bingo but we're gonna continue on so we have the spherical or oval structure that contains DNA that is in a nuclear envelope double membrane and then last one transfer vesicles move uh modified proteins like glycoproteins glycolipids and lipoproteins from cistern to cistern so thanks for playing and if you found this helpful please feel free to comment and like and let's see if you want these slides feel free to again email me if you're a part of my club or you can click the link in my description box for your slides again my name is Rochelle your microbiology tutor and I will see you in the next video um bye